Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee meeting of June 13th, 2018. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 until our next regularly scheduled meeting and is also available for streaming at the Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Tonight's meeting will be the final regularly scheduled meeting of the 2017-2018 school year. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on August 29th. The first item on our agenda is public participation. This is the first item on our agenda at each regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Public participation provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee. Tonight, no one has expressed interest in addressing the committee under public participation, but those wishing to do so in the future should contact the chairperson in advance of the meeting and we will recognize you for up to three minutes. The next item on the agenda is chairpersons' and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
None. Next item on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Palich. A couple of additional successes as high school season comes to a close. We've had in athletics, several teams that are competing in the postseason have done quite well and advanced. We still have one team that's left, our girls softball team. It just won a game last night. We're playing in the district final on Saturday versus Waukesha City. Time to be determined. I believe it's going to be at Worcester State University where that game will take place. You can tune in to check out the website to get final information on that, so good luck to that team. Also, the school committee may remember that we had some runners from the winter track season who were our New England champions. Well, that same team won the outdoor four-by-100-meter New England championship as well this past weekend to any group of athletes and we'll be certain to send along further congratulations on behalf of the school district to those student athletes. And then finally, wanted to let the community know, this year, as you know, we appointed Tiffany Ostrander as the principal at the Coolidge School. And Mrs. Ostrander is going to be adding to her family, and so she's going to be taking maternity leave this coming fall from the first part of the school year through Thanksgiving. And I'm very pleased to announce that Dr. Jean Fitzgerald will be the acting principal at Coolidge School during the time that Ms. Ostrander's on leave. Jean Fitzgerald is a longtime school administrator. She recently retired. She's served in a whole variety of roles, everything from department chair to assistant principal at the high school level, to elementary principal next door here in Northborough, and as assistant superintendent and superintendent in Watertown Public Schools. So she's an experienced, successful school administrator who we know will do a good job in the interim role during that time period. So welcome to Dr. Fitzgerald and we'll be sure to communicate. We communicated to the Coolidge staff and parents today that that would be the case. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is an annual time-scheduled appointment. This is recognition of our retiring staff members. Tonight, we have a number of staff members who are ending their career with Shrewsbury Public Schools with a well-deserved retirement. I'm told that in combination, they have served the students of Shrewsbury for 291 years, representing an average of about 20 years of service each and does not include any service in other districts. Each of these talented educators are someone who we tremendously value and you have made an incredibly significant difference on behalf of the students of Shrewsbury. And I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent who will kick off our recognition.
Well, I'll pass it over to Barb Malone, the Director of Human Resources, who's compiled the information about our recipients. And I'll make a general comment after they've had a chance to be recognized and celebrated.
Great. So we have a number of people here tonight, as Mr. Palich said. So I'm going to start with what we call other roles. Mary Ricker has served 21 years in food service here at Shrewsbury Public Schools. She is not able to come tonight, but she is retiring as the cafeteria manager from Shrewsbury High School. Then we move on to our paraprofessionals. Barbara Andriano has served 43 years as an educator, with 16 of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a media aide from Floral Street Elementary School. We're going to move on to, this is not a typo, Barbara Androconis has served 20 years in education here at Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a child-specific aide from Spring Street School. And if you would please stand to be recognized. Thank you.
I'm going to just interrupt briefly. Ms. Androconis was a late addition because we learned of her retirement when we opened our email this morning. So this was a quick turnaround. It was catching on. Hopefully it didn't catch on too much.
I know. I was afraid that maybe her principal was sitting with her because he was next.
That's right. That's why her name's not in your packet, because we just learned of Ms. Androconis.
I see he moved his seat. And then we also have Laura K. Cosenza has served 25 years as an educator, with 14 of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a child-specific aide from Sherwood Middle School. And if you could please stand, Laura K. And for those I'm asking to stand, if you decide you'd like to speak instead, feel free to just say, "Never mind, I'm coming up to the mic," and that's completely fine. So now we're going to move to our teachers and professional staff. Alan Beer has served 35 years as an educator, with all of those years here in Shrewsbury. He is retiring as a technology education teacher from Oak Middle School. Alan. Janet Duggan has served 25 years as an educator, with 18 of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a sixth-grade mathematics and science teacher from Sherwood Middle School. Sue Hirsch, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped Deb Friedman, has served nearly 25 years as an educator at Shrewsbury with 10 years of previous clinical experience before she became an educator. She is retiring as a speech-language pathologist from the Walter J. Patton Elementary School, and she has a few words to share.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, and school committee members for recognizing me at my retirement. As you've stated, I've worked as a speech-and-language pathologist, and to be precise, it's been 24.6 years in this district, and it's been a pleasure to serve you. Even though I am being acknowledged, I would like to celebrate and applaud all the students I have worked with over the years. They have worked hard to do their best, and I know they will continue to do so and accomplish great things. Thank you for letting me be a part of your educational experience.
Sue Hirsch has served 38 years as an educator, with 16 of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a special education teacher from Sherwood Middle School, and she has a few words to share.
When I told my fifth graders that I was retiring, a couple of them very excitedly told me I could now go get a job at McDonald's and they could come and visit me. I told them I'd think about it, but I don't think so. Since I've been here, I've moved from being in a trailer behind Shrewsbury Middle School to being in the building, to the beautiful state-of-the-art building that we're in now. It's been such a great journey with all the terrific kids, the creative and innovative teachers, and the supportive parents and administration. So, thank you very much.
Mary Beth Lifer has served 20 years as an educator, with all of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a fourth-grade teacher from the Walter J. Patton Elementary School. Joanne McLaughlin has served 33 years as an educator, with 30 of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a kindergarten teacher from the Beal Early Childhood Center. She's unable to be with us tonight and sense her regrets. So moving on to Patrice McCabe has served 22 years as an educator and is wrapping up her 20th year in Shrewsbury. Patrice was hired in August of 1998 as a paraprofessional at Floral Street School. Then in April of 1999, accepted a fifth-grade teaching position at the same school. She is retiring as a fifth-grade English Language Arts and Social Studies teacher from Sherwood Middle School. Janet Pope has served 32 years as an educator in Shrewsbury. Janet taught home economics at Shrewsbury High School for 12 of those years and 20 years working in the middle school media centers. Janet is retiring as the media specialist from Sherwood Middle School, and I understand she has a few words for us.
I wanted to take an opportunity to take a little trip down memory lane tonight. As I look ahead to my first days of retirement, I was thinking back to my first experiences with the Shrewsbury Public Schools, and that was my first day of first grade at Patton School. And I clearly remember my dad helping me find my desk where there were crayons and a coloring page book waiting for me. That was a real special memory. I was glad to be able to think back on that. Many other firsts followed that. My first day of class at the brand-new junior high school that was later renamed Sherwood Middle. And I think I may be the only person who was present opening day at both of those schools 48 years apart. In high school, I remember my first visit to the Wang Calculator Lab, a special room. And I also recall the first day, one girl was brave enough to wear pants to school, and that started a fashion revolution for students, followed soon by the female staff. Then there was my first day of teaching. In the time since I graduated, not quite four years before, home and shop classes had gone co-ed and students were on the four-day week. In 1979, Pika Staldi introduced the first computers made by Radio Shack. I was lucky enough to be a stay-at-home mom for a dozen years, and during that time, I volunteered at Beal and Spring Street. Saw many firsts, many changes. Then the middle school media position was advertised, and I could sense it might be a good fit. I'd been working there a short while when there was another very special first for me. It was the first time a student, a reluctant reader, brought back a book I'd recommended, and he beamed, "That book was awesome. Do you have any more like it?" Thank you to both the school department and the PTO for your long support to the media centers. You've made books and information available to all the students. Books and reading continue to be one important constant in our ever-changing world. I'm pleased to report we loaned over 21,000 books at Sherwood this year alone, and I thank you for letting us be able to do that. I'll miss the students and staff at Sherwood who thrive under the dream team of Jane Lazard, Heather Goblaski, and Karen Gudekans. I'll miss Shauna Powers and my colleagues in the ITMs department. And I thank Dr. Sawyer and Bob Canaccioli for always encouraging me to grow into new opportunities. I've always been so proud of our schools, and I truly appreciate having been able to play a small role, wearing different hats. Thank you so much.
Martha Kinback has served 22 years as an educator, with 19 of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a first-grade teacher from Spring Street Elementary School, and I understand she has some words.
I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Sawyer and all the school committee members for giving me this opportunity to just say a few words. I'd like to thank my colleagues, the leadership team at Spring Street School, families and children that I too have been able to work with over the past 20 years. It's really been a pleasure to be part of the Shrewsbury Public School system for actually over 30 years as both a parent and a teacher. When we moved to Shrewsbury about 31 years ago, my oldest daughter, Emily, was only four years old. She began her academic career at Beal School and continued through the public school system, graduating from Shrewsbury High School in 2001. My other three children followed in her footsteps, and all four, I felt, were very well-prepared for their college years based on the strong foundation that they received at Shrewsbury. I quickly became involved as a young parent in the school system as a volunteer and supporter of the many initiatives that evolved over the years. I recognized the very high-quality education my children were receiving and was really quite anxious to become a part of that. So in 1999, I too began my career in the Shrewsbury Public School system as a classroom teacher. I can say with confidence and pride that I have enjoyed every day coming to work. Looking back, I've had a wonderful opportunity to touch the lives of over 400 children and their families, and I hope that I have been a positive influence on their lives as they have been on mine. I feel very fortunate that I've been able to be associated with the Shrewsbury School system, and I too will miss those people that I've worked with for many, many days and many years. Thank you very much.
Roseanne Silver has served 17 years as an educator, with all of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a kindergarten teacher from Spring Street Elementary School. Stephen Winters has served 33 years as an educator, with 17 of those years here in Shrewsbury. He is retiring as a special education teacher from Oak Middle School. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe Lauren Casella is here. She has served 36 years as an educator, with 11 of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as an English teacher from Shrewsbury High School, and she sent me a statement to read, which I would like to read on her behalf. So, "Dear Dr. Sawyer, members of the Shrewsbury School Committee, Education Department staff, faculty, staff, and students of Shrewsbury High School, and the community of Shrewsbury. When I first came to SHS in 2007, I found myself in teacher heaven. I thank Chuck Danielson for appreciating and encouraging my style of teaching and providing such enthusiasm and inspiration with his creativity and vast repertoire of knowledge. His genuine care for students, enthusiasm, gentlemanly demeanor, and sensitivity to human dignity were very meaningful to me, and among other considerations, drew me to Shrewsbury's English Department. As an English teacher, I particularly value tone, and the tone was set for my tenure at SHS within the first few weeks. When I looked into our media center resources to best address one of my senior research projects, then-media center specialist Claire Donovan reviewed the assignment and saw the need for more access to professional literary criticism to fully support it. She initiated our application for an SEF grant to fund the purchase and close that gap. What a community. The SEF granted us these funds, which made a real impact. As a direct result, students' research, thinking, writing, and speaking took on this greater sophistication. This experience was just the beginning, as at every such request, my students were supported in some way, whether it was help for lower-income students to pay for field trips, permission and use of the presentation room for speakers, and sixth-grade PAL visits, thanks Moya Christie and Jane Lazard, sponsorship to facilitate a spoken-word poetry experience at Worcester State, as well as a host of other meaningful pursuits. The spark, the immediacy, the drive, the follow-through, the lift, the will. I have tried to remember that students are always observing. Once we have studied Herman Hesse's Siddhartha as he finds his way to enlightenment as a fitting way to bring high school years to a close, and this begs philosophical discussion and reflection. Over the years, as students have written about authentic examples of those living the values of each of the noble eightfold paths, many of their examples are from right here among Shrewsbury family and friends. Your right understanding, right intent, right speech, right action, right livelihood, right effort, right mindedness, and right concentration are recognized and admired by these young people. They are aware. With your everyday examples, our students become well-prepared to fulfill the mission of SBS. Our students, I teach or love them all, and it's no secret. I feel that a warm, comfortable, thoughtful space is just the right atmosphere in which young people can best gain confidence and empower themselves with conscious development of their insights and skills. At times, we even discuss the teenage brain and their development, connecting this to our learning. Thanks, Jill Carter. Their motivation to learn is motivating, and they made my day every day." I'd like to thank you, Dr. Sawyer, and our school committee, for your vision and steadfast commitments to the moving target of excellence. Thanks also to the progressive administration of SHS, with whom I have had the honor of working for years. Todd Buzidlow, I know you're here, PJ O'Connell, Maureen Monopoly, and Greg Nirvada. And we welcome Jeff Lazard this year. These fine people are absolutely dedicated to supporting student learning from all angles with such professionalism and care. Thank you beyond measure to our SHS English Department Chair, Liza Tremblay, who represents the best in all educators, a champion for students, a dedicated supportive leader, a creative forward thinker, a person of integrity, and a kind-hearted compassionate soul. Our English Department excels with her leadership and the strong dedication and talents of my esteemed colleagues and friends. Our media center specialist, Emily Breadberg, brings passion and energy to her provision and assistance with excellent connection strategies and resources. Our special education department members and school nurses work closely to address and support each student's needs with such care. Our hard-working secretaries multitask impressively to facilitate the smooth running of our operations, and our custodians have always been on point and dutiful responsive partners with the upkeep of our physical environment. I owe all a debt of gratitude. I am honored to have been a part of your team. Any progress realized by any of my efforts was inspired and supported by you. You'll be glad to know that students have often mentioned the field of education among their examples of right livelihood. I couldn't have found a more rewarding path. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for entrusting me with the opportunity to serve our students of Shrewsbury. Best wishes to all as you continue to make a profound and resonating impact with our young people. They are in great hands. Thank you, Lauren Casella.
Excellent. Thank you. Colleagues, questions or comments? Mrs. Gonzano.
Well, I just want to thank you so much for your service. One of the great pleasures of being on school committee is we have these kinds of meetings in the springtime, and just recently, we had the top 10 here, and they spoke so passionately about teachers and how they impacted their lives all the way back to first, second, third grade. So the work that you're doing, whether it's in early childhood education and up to 12th grade, really makes an impact, and I so appreciate your hard work and wish you all the best in your retirement.
And I'll just add to that, I was struck by that figure I mentioned at the top 291 combined years. Doing some quick math, it's something like over 10,000 students who have been served by your combined works over the years. So you have certainly touched a lot of lives in Shrewsbury, and you have our eternal gratitude for that. Dr. Sawyer, I think we might have some additional components for recognition, and of course, your comments.
Yeah, so let me just add that my thanks for your service, first off, for the many years of hard work and dedication you've put in and the skill you've brought to the work. As has been mentioned, this is an incredibly impactful profession. You have changed lives for the better, and you've made our community better as a result of your contributions. And as you move into retirement, you have the benefit that not everyone has, which is to look back and realize that the work that you did truly made a difference, and that's something that should give you great satisfaction. We wish you the very best for a happy and healthy retirement, and we'd ask at this point if you come up and shake the committee's hand, and we have a small token of our appreciation for you as well. So please come up, and again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. She just graduated from high school. She's going to Wellesley for chemistry. That's right. I will.
Congratulations.
Deb, thank you so much. I'm going to invest in something very important. I know.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for your service.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. We want to sit in some arms.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll do it.
For your downtime.
Congratulations. You are. Yep, congratulations, Steve. Congratulations on your second retirement. All right, now, great job. Thank you very much. I'll mention that we'll see you on Sunday. All right, thank you. Moving on with our agenda, our next time-scheduled appointment this evening is student recognition. Our state science fair champion, Shrewsbury High School 10th grader Zoe Rudnick, won a first-place award at the Massachusetts State Science Fair for her project, Robot Navigation for the Exploration of Lunar and Planetary Surfaces. That's the most complicated sentence I'm going to say all night. We'd like to invite Zoe up to talk about her project and her experience at the science fair. Welcome.
As Zoe comes up, Mr. David Riscosi, who's the director of science and engineering at the high school, will join her as well. And if you just hit the bar there, your presentation should be down on the dock, and if you want to, if you just go all the way down to the bottom and click on that. Here we go, and then you just have to select, play the slideshow.
So first, thank you, Dr. Sawyer, and thank you to the school committee for recognizing Zoe's accomplishment. We're certainly very proud of what she has done, and I thought you would appreciate learning a little bit about the experience that brought her to the first-place accomplishment that she had earned. So we start with about 40 or 50 students at the science fair at the high school, and that takes place in February. And then we are, as a school, are able to select 12 students, and those 12 students are selected by community judges who come in and evaluate the work that the students do. And so Zoe was one of the 12 projects that were selected to advance to the regional level. And then at the regional level, that's a science fair that takes place at WPI, and that typically takes place in March. There's approximately 200 students from across the region who are participating in that science fair. We had five, six, seven students who advanced from the regional fair to the state fair. So if you earn an award at the regional level, that provides you the bid to the state level. So Zoe earned an award at the regional level, which then advanced her to MIT, and the MIT State Science Fair is held in May, and there's approximately 400 to 500 students that are competing at that level. And the way that the tiers of prizes or accomplishments work is that there's approximately 20 first-place awards that are given at the state level. So there isn't a first place, but nonetheless, only the top 20 are earning that first slot, and so out of 400 or 500 students, it's nonetheless a great accomplishment. So with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Zoe to describe exactly what her work was that earned her that award.
Thank you. So, as it was said, the title of my project is Robot Navigation for the Exploration of Lunar and Planetary Surfaces, and I did this project as a part of the Honors Chemistry Research Methods class, and I'm in my sophomore year at Shrewsbury High School, and I've done the science fair for three years now, starting in eighth grade. So to give a brief overview of my project, I wrote a new navigational algorithm based on routing algorithms for integrated circuits, and I did this in Java. And the routing algorithms that I used are the greedy maze routing algorithm, a greedy line probe algorithm, and simulated annealing. And the new algorithm that I created was tested based on its ability to navigate around various amounts and sizes of obstacles against the maze routing algorithm. And I tested it against the maze router because it was used on the Sojourner Rover as a part of the Mars Pathfinder mission in 1997. So it was used in real life. And to visualize the simulation results, I created a user interface using Java, which I have here. So this is an example of how I ran the tests. On the right, you can see I have a field where I can choose which algorithm to use, how many obstacles there will be, and what the maximum size of the obstacles will be. And the algorithm shown in this example is my new algorithm, and the black boxes represent And the new algorithm that I created is designed for smaller robots to use on rough terrain such as on the moon or Mars. In larger robots such as the Mars Curiosity, more complex navigational methods, what using map building, are used. However, for small robots, it's more efficient to use simpler algorithms, like the routing algorithms that I used. And finally, I, the new algorithm was implemented onto a Roomba Create 2 by porting the code onto a Raspberry Pi. As you can see there, it's the little chip. And then I connected it to the robot, and it uses touch sensors to detect the nearby objects, and the code worked on the robot as it did in the simulations. That's all.
That's for starts.
Yes.
Wow. Colleagues, questions or comments? Mrs. Consano.
So that's amazing, and we're really proud of how well you did. Where did you learn how to use Java? And when you were competing, did you see other females? Were there a lot of young women in the competition as well?
I learned Java on my own. There's lots of websites to look through, and you can search up like specific areas of code that you need because the algorithms all use kind of the same area of code rather than just specific Java, but it still does use some specific things or some general things. And at the fairs, it's pretty even between girls and boys, yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Excellent. Further questions, comments? I have a question. Pretend that my conceptual understanding of this is quite poor. Pretend I mean that is the case. I think of smaller things as being more nimble and manageable, but you noted that it's more efficient for smaller robots to use simpler algorithms as opposed to larger robots. Why is that the case?
I would say that because it just requires less, like a smaller processor, and it requires less like, it doesn't need a camera to take photos, and it doesn't need the things to process that.
Okay. Wow. I am bowled over and incredibly impressed. You've obviously represented our district and Shrewsbury High School extremely well, so congratulations on this incredible achievement. Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
No, thank you. Congratulations, Zoe. And the question I have is, maybe you can talk a little bit about how being part of the research methods class and having to do these projects, did you just have any sense of how that might, has influenced your education to date, but also what you might be pursuing in the future, how that might influence what may be career choice or what you're thinking about in terms of post-high school education?
Being part of the class has been really good towards my education. I've learned how to do technical writing. I have a 33-page essay that I did for this. I've learned how to get data, how to do data analysis. And so it's also made me just more excited about science in general. I really like chemistry, and I'm taking AP Chemistry next year, and I'm thinking about going into engineering in college.
Excellent.
Excellent. Well, I had the opportunity actually this past weekend to go with my daughter and my sister and my niece to the Touch Tomorrow Festival at W P I, which was a really outstanding STEM fair. But if you happen to check out Dr. Leschen, the president of W P I actually worked on the Mars project for NASA before she went into higher education leadership, so you may want to check out her social media account and whether W P I or some other schools in your future, whoever it is is going to end up being lucky to get you. But we've got you for a couple more years to hopefully keep making contributions to the Science and Engineering Department, and I'm sure you'll find that the coursework going forward to be similarly engaging hopefully for you. So, but congratulations on this wonderful project. And at this point, we do have a certificate for you, so if you come up and shake the committee's hands, and again, congratulations.
Congratulations. Great job.
Congratulations. Great job.
Congratulations, Zoe. Well done.
Nice job. Great effort.
Keep it up.
Excellent. The next item on our agenda is the time-scheduled appointment, Shrewsbury High School's Improvement Plan. Every Massachusetts public school must have a school council who is required to assist in the development of a school improvement plan. Last week, we heard our school improvement plans and voted on our school improvement plans for our elementary schools as well as our middle schools. Tonight, we will hear the presentation of the proposed Shrewsbury High School Improvement Plan, which is of course enclosed in our meeting materials, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Buzidlow.
Well, good evening. I was going to say good morning. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. Quite an act to follow with Zoe and her presentation. Probably not a little less technical and maybe not as riveting, but certainly important as we close out the school year. So tonight, I'm joined by sophomore Nick Zeko. Nick is a former Project 351 ambassador. You're probably familiar with him. He has a gift of the gab. He's very smart. He's been on Dr. Lizzott's cultivating connections through the Shrewsbury Media Connection Program she ran. He's a very affable, personable young man. He kind of has a pulse of what's happening at the high school. He and Marley Atlobachu, who you probably also know, served as co-chairs of our school council with me, and that's a difference that the high school has in relationship to the other schools in the district. Between all their schedules, Marley couldn't join us tonight, but between their schedules and trying to meet with adults and talk about some pretty heady issues at school, they've really provided us some good, solid perspective on what makes sense for students and helped us craft our school improvement plan. So Nick will help me present tonight. We've sat a couple times and done this. He'll probably do a better job than I, but we'll move forward. I want to thank, in the audience tonight, Bob Ryan. Bob is completing his first term as a school council member. He's been very good in helping us think about and articulate some of the challenges that as a parent, as students have, are faced when they're at the high school. So he's here tonight. I gave, I gave everyone the night off except Nick and I. Bob thought it would be good for him to come and participate in this, at least be supportive, so I thank him. As you can see, we have a relatively, you know, 10, 12 people on the council, and we've worked really hard to try and address our improvement plan as we relate to the strategic priorities adopted by the school district. So as we think of the space resources to support effective learning, and as you know, you probably heard this, or you did hear this last week with the elementary and middle school plans, was particularly at the high school, we're strapped for space. It's, we're over capacity or at capacity or near capacity, and enrollment's going to continue, is going to continue to grow. So part of what we need to do, and I think part of our conversations this past fall and even winter, was what are some things that we can do at the high school to address space considerations through programmatic changes? And the things we discuss will have financial impact and consequences on the budget for the next budgetary cycle. So we will form a committee in the fall to address some of those issues and hopefully be able to present you a report, December, January timeline, of what we believe are some issues that may need your consideration as you develop the budget, as Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins develop the budget. So we're going to work through that in the fall. That's not a small task.
From a student's perspective, as Mr. Buzidlow said, being at the high school, I feel like whether it's inside school or outside of school, it is a topic that is discussed quite frequently. Most likely seen during lunches, I was speaking to Mr. Buzidlow about this earlier today, sometimes we have up to 600 people per lunch, and it's a very crowded room, especially when the bell rings, and we don't just have students transitioning to another class that weren't in lunch at the period. But I eat second lunch, so that's a split-block period. So I'll have a class for half the time, then go to lunch, and then go back to the class. So I feel like that transition back to the classroom is very hectic because there's people coming down the stairs as you're going back to your classroom. But I do feel like the solution that we did come up with will be very beneficial to possibly fixing or eliminating that problem for students and administration as well, because as they're trying to get around, there's a rush of students coming through. So hopefully with that, we can come up with a solution.
Additionally, we look at everyone, learning environments where every, every student, or everyone's success matters. We're really looking at a systematic approach to address the equity and access that we have within our curricular programming, whether it's co-curricular or academic programming. So in very small print, we're looking at taking an inventory of assessment practices that we have at the high school and looking how inclusive they are, looking at specially-designed instruction for students that might be served by an I E P or in special education, and also looking and creating target areas that we need to address for specialized instruction within the high school to promote access and equity. By the end of this plan in June 2020, we hope to take a look at those goals and targets and be able to report those out and share with you the metrics of how we've met that success and some things that have happened. Some of the things that we've adopted at the high school and will continue to grow is this past year, we have seven co-teaching models in the math and sciences in particular. Next year, we'll have eight, where we have two teachers delivering curriculum specially-designed instruction for students with special education and also general education students within that programming. And those teams require training, but also time together to collaborate, and that's another piece around the programmatic piece, which presents problems in our schedule because we just don't have the time built in to develop a professional learning community that we'd like to have relative to some of the equity and access piece we have to take a look at. As we move on, part of what we have to do, and the leadership, leadership team at the high school has to do is carve out time between faculty meeting and department times to address and present professional development programs in order to improve their own practice when they have in the classroom. And that's a pretty technical, yet I don't want to say easy, because it is kind of an adaptive, but relatively easy fix in terms of trying to provide time and carving out that time for people to, our staff, to be able to take a look at that around inclusive and culturally proficient practices and look to how we implement that, those within the classroom. Additionally, this is where the data geek and meat kicks in. We really focus a lot on data, I think, throughout the district, but particularly at the high school, when we look at achievement data, whether it's through A P, S A T, or M C A S. And M C A S is probably the most significant that we look at relative to state testing in terms of how do we address performance gaps? And we're level two, we're a level-two school at the high school, so we have to take a look at where those gaps are and then make curricular instructional adjustments to try and close those gaps. High-need students in categories, high-need students with disabilities or special education, and also English-speaking learners and students that face poverty are some of the areas that we need to shore up and try and correct or try and improve our outcomes on. So taking, using the state's Edwin Analytics, taking a look at those subgroups, finding out like where some of the challenges present themselves, and trying to specialize instruction or change curriculum will be really important. Additionally, another thing that we've noticed is a few years ago, we were recognized by the College Board for having our Advanced Placement Program, having access and equity as one of the model schools, I think we had for a couple of years. And as we looked at the data, we're still finding some gaps within those data sets. So we're going to take a look at how we can address culturally and also, I think, socioeconomically, how we address students with some of those barriers to be included within, provide more access encouragement to advanced placement programming, and we can do that through Edwin Analytics and using the College Board data. So some pretty lofty goals, but we'll try and figure out how and if we can do that and see where some of the things we need to remediate are. The big push is around strategic priority around well-being of all. For those, I had a conversation this, was it this week or last week, with someone in industry, someone associated with industry who said that the private sector for job HR people is telling the private sector that S E L practices have to be adopted within corporations over the next three to five years, and you need to start planning now because of the pipeline coming in from colleges. So the private sector has even jumped on board of this. Hearing that really makes me feel like we're moving in the right direction as a school district ahead of the curve, but addressing some of the concerns that even society has. So part of what we're going to do, and the district will do, is try and look to adopt the framework for S E L, and then how we're going to incorporate that within our practices at the high school. And that will take a wide, a diverse group of people, parents, students, and staff, to try and address that.
Breaking off a little bit from what Mr. Buzidlow said, as you get from a sophomore to being a junior and then to becoming a senior in your final years of high school, there is pieces of stress and anxiety that are brought upon you as a student because not just are you hoping to get all your good grades and your common classes, but you're also moving on to being a mature adult soon. As Mr. Buzidlow said, hopefully the standardized framework that we addressed in the school council will help to accommodate the students' needs with addressing the topics of having your own mortgaging and paying and having your loans in college. So hopefully with this, it can give students a better understanding of what's pretty much expected of them once they become an adult and what they're going to need to accomplish to be able to do that.
In the same vein, I think we have to carve out, so 50% of my time in the next two years will be directed toward social-emotional learning, and it might be more than that, but also culturally proficient and inclusive practices are real to access pieces that I think we need to take a look at. So meeting with our leadership team, we decided that 25%, again, of those meetings will be focused on professional development that incorporate the practices around student social-emotional learning, and it could be even more based upon the framework we adopt as a district once that work is completed in the fall or next, 2018. The good news story is, and Nick will speak a little bit about this, is our students are well aware of what's happening at the high school and have taken their, have jumped the gun, so to speak, in terms of understanding and identifying the stressors that have happened, and they've actually started to move on this priority already with the Student Wellness Ambassador Team. So as a group of students approached our school council and wanted to put together Wellness Week and some wellness activities, knowing and recognizing the levels of stress that we see at the high school, the student council didn't have the bandwidth to do it this year. So what ended up, what ended up happening, they farmed it out to an open forum where we had 47 students turn, show up to be a part of this group. The group has worked on a video based on Stanford, Stanford's Challenge Success Model, which was presented last Thursday night at our eighth-grade parent meeting. Rising eighth grade, rising ninth grade parents came to the high school for a meeting with Mrs. Wen, Dr. Beth Neiman, and Kathy Floyd to talk about some of the things that they could expect through high schools, like the pre-freshman parent-freshman orientation meeting, which, which was good. We had over 100 people attend, so it speaks to some of the things that our parents are feeling with their kids. So the Student Wellness Advisory Team is planning on due six school-wide activities next year, monthly, and then culminating with a week-long of wellness activities during the spring of 19. We're not entirely sure what that looks like yet, but they've been working with Mrs. Garcia, Mrs. Wen, Mrs. Donna Frio, and Mrs. Bertnik around that whole, those four women actually developed that group and are kind of trying to coach and counsel that group into providing these activities for the high school next year. So I'm looking forward to seeing what that will look like and reporting that out to you. Additionally, I, you know, this is one of these things where I think we need to take a really hard look at, is trying to have every student connected to one adult in the building besides their English teacher or math teacher, like someone, their trusted advisor. And I think a number of schools, and this came out of our N E A C report, a decennial visit a few years ago, or a couple of years ago, was the idea that one of the standards in the N E A C was to have an advisory period where students loop or are paired with a teacher for four years, and they serve as a de facto advisor for all the things, college, career, grades, access, health services, all those things. We had a curriculum a number of years ago that was developed during the summer, and we just didn't have the opportunity to implement it. I think, and looking at 18, 19, getting staff around that initiative and trying to implement it sooner or later would be a huge benefit, I think, for our school, really trying to reduce the size. We're not entirely sure what that looks like yet, but they've been working with Mrs. Garcia, Mrs. Wen, Mrs. Donna Frio, and Mrs. Bertnik around that whole, those four women actually developed that group and are kind of trying to coach and counsel that group into providing these activities for the high school next year. So I'm looking forward to seeing what that will look like and reporting that out to you. Additionally, I, you know, this is one of these things where I think we need to take a really hard look at is trying to have every student connected to one adult in the building besides their English teacher or math teacher, like someone, their trusted advisor. And I think a number of schools, and this came out of our NEAC report, a decennial visit a few years ago, or a couple of years ago, was the idea that one of the standards in the NEAC was to have an advisory period where students loop or are paired with a teacher for four years and they serve as a de facto advisor for all the things, college, career, grades, access, health services, all those things. We had a curriculum a number of years ago that was developed during the summer, and we just didn't have the opportunity to implement it. I think, looking at 1819, getting staff around that initiative and trying to implement it sooner or later would be a huge benefit, I think, for our school, really trying to reduce the size of the 1,900-person building so that every person has someone to turn to or a champion. And I think also speaks to school safety. When kids are connected with people in school, those schools are safer. So the hope is to do that, and I hope, hopefully, we can get our staff on board and implement this with the 1819 school year, and if not, soon thereafter.
So a little bit towards that, again, from a student's perspective. I feel like when there's a good camaraderie between students and the faculty at the school, it gives students' well-being and emotions more of a feeling of safety, I think the word I'm looking for is. As Mr. Buzidlo said, hopefully during the spring of 2019 and 2020, this will have a week in the spring dedicated, which we would call a Wellness Week, to hopefully have every student involved with one teacher, all their peers, to work to make sure each student's individual needs are met. So hopefully with this SWAT team that we have came up with, this can make a student have a feeling of well-being or a second home, as I like to call it.
Again, the Connected Learning is another opportunity for us to try and make that authentic experiential learning stick. I think that most of us, when we think of our own experiences, at least for me, I think about things that I did that stuck with me, whether it was dissecting the fetal pig or the cat in biology when I was in high school, or doing labs in chemistry or physics. Those things for me were those sticky moments where I actually had to do things to learn. And doing things, I think, is a good way for students to learn and be able to retain that information or that knowledge. So trying to develop and developing an inventory of what we currently do for those projects and trying to improve those projects within departments, not just, say, in the science department or mathematics department when we do applications, but really looking at how we can further integrate that within students' learning. Also, the thing that I think we struggle with around project-based learning, one facet is connecting to an authentic audience and being able to publish that or have people come in. So that's another area that I think we need to shore up relative to PBL, which we hope to work with when we conduct a full assessment of the things that we're doing at the high Nick talked a little bit about this, and the Connected Learning, and we talked, I know that the committee, I've been before the committee when we talked about the need for financial literacy, and there is legislation that's currently proposed in the state to provide financial literacy and also civics, more civics in high schools, and there's certainly a tension between all those. But I think we need to continue to refine and build upon the foundation we have working with some of the programs we have. I'll let Nick talk a little bit about what we talked about in our meetings.
My experience is I feel that teachers and the staff at the high school do an excellent job at providing students with the skills to make ethical and informed decisions in their lives and as they move on from the high school. I do think that it is beneficial for students to certainly have assistance in developing financial literacy. As you know, Central One Federal Credit Union does do a road to financial independence. This is almost like a simulation between the students who get different experiences in different occupations, and you can see how you budget your money, what you'd have for yourself, and what needs to go to certain things around your home or in your regular life. This takes place during senior math classes. I haven't gotten too experienced yet, but I have seen it, and it does look like a very knowledgeable thing to participate in. This gives students more of an idea of paying rents, paying mortgages of a home, electrics, and everything. And I think that having this at the high school really gives our students a better understanding of organizing one's finances, so I do think that's very beneficial for each student to experience.
And as you know, the reality fair this past spring, and I think some people participated in this, was an outstanding opportunity for 470 students to do a real-life simulation during one of those early-release half-days, which took a lot of coordination from our business community. And I appreciate their support. I think the big thing we need from our business community is just volunteerism, more than actual cash or a donation. I think that that particular program relies heavily on human capital, so I want to thank our business community for helping to make that a success. The, we talked a lot about homework at the high school. The efficacy of homework, is it compliance work? Is it meaningful? Is it, and I know the parents had a perspective on it, our staff had a perspective on it, our students had a perspective on it. And I think this aligns, again, with the work that, in the strategic priorities that we have to do relative to what is homework and how do we leverage that to improve students' learning. So we have to certainly get a diverse group, and it's not, can't just be teachers, it can't just be parents, it can't just be administrators. I think the real critical component, and Mr. Ryan brought this up in our conversation in dealing with his sons, and homework is, it's got to be a diverse group, and students have to be, it has to be heavily centered with students and students providing feedback. So we hope to start to work on that and have these conversations on what homework looks like. So it's going to be an interesting conversation, and hopefully we can get some resolution. Nick certainly has, you have homework tonight, Nick?
I do. I have a math review packet I need to finish up, yes.
All right, so you can talk a little bit about homework, I guess, then. Maybe you're the expert on it.
So I do surely think that many of the assignments that we are given as students, they are meaningful and beneficial to our learning. I use this example with Mr. Buzidlo. I play golf. I'm a golfer. So I practice my golf skills, and at the end, when I play for the high school, that final stage is the matches that we participate in. Now, this relates to homework because when you're assigned a specific assignment from a teacher, it is beneficial to your learning. It's your practice which gets you to that final stage, whether it's a test or having a final, which are coming up for all of us at the end of the year. And it gives you an impact on what you're going to be experiencing or what you're going to have to do when that time comes. I have had the experiences of having some assignments that I look at, and I'm like, this is good to know, but it's not going to help with that final stage. But like I said before, most of the assignments that we are given, I feel, help us in the long run, even though it could be long-term assignments. I feel like it could definitely help us when the time comes.
The golf analogy is a great one. It's got to be meaningful, and you have to benefit from it. If you're chipping the wrong way, Nick.
Absolutely.
You've got to chip 100 times the wrong way. So I think feedback and good practice is a good idea. So that, we have to get to the bottom of that homework piece. We'll work on that. And again, continuing our work with our business partnerships, I think we've had some success. And I know that this coming fall, we were piloting a work-study program. We have 47 students that have signed up for that. The assistant principals and I met with that group yesterday to have conversations after school about what that would look like relative to paperwork and everything that they need to complete prior to the start of next school year. So we had a good meeting there. We haven't had any job shadowing requests yet, so this summer, I'm connecting with, I do have been in email communication with members of the community who have a wealth of experience that we have to try and connect and build that sense of an inventory of people that we can go and see what that looks like and try and promote that with our students. So we will be happily to report, or happy to report, what happens to our job shadow, rather work-study program and then job shadow in the future. And then the last, but certainly not least, is career explorations for Naviance and shoring that up a little bit.
So I haven't really used Naviance that much this year. I've heard from my peers that it comes much more as you're getting into your junior and senior year because you're going to be leaving for college soon. The times I did use it, I found it to be a very interesting tool. You can pick a career, and from there, you can see what your finances are going to be, what your earnings are. And it's kind of like the Central One simulation. I feel you get to experience what that's going to be, whether it's going to work for you and your personal needs. And I think by having that, it helps with the college search process as well, to figure out where you're going to go, what your occupation is going to be. And by this, I feel like each student truly does benefit from having this because even though someone might not like doing it, because it does take a while, it does help you. It gives you a common and a stern foundation to what you're going to be doing once you become an adult.
Questions for Nick. Colleagues, questions or comments for our presenters, Mrs. Fritz?
Just a couple of comments. I like the team looking at the space needs and getting that to us as we look at the budget so we can prioritize within the budget because we certainly, I mean, we can't say, well, half of you stay home today, we don't have space. So I think that's great that you'll get that to us so we can look at it. I like how you mentioned the private sector with SEL. I had just mentioned to Chris Girardi before a meeting last night, we just got a big thing at the corporation that I work for. It used to be work-life balance, and now we're kind of moving into this SEL, you know, so it's everywhere. So it's good that we're getting onto that. The homework, as a parent, I used to say, well, it's great, you do need to, but sometimes there was that busy stuff. And if we can get away from things that are more just busy versus really reinforcing and learning, I think it adds that balance and helps with the stress students experience when they do have a ton of work. And maybe not all of it, I'm not saying not necessary, but it might be just more busy than what they need to do. And my question is, when we talk about student success and you're talking about, you know, looking at subgroups, I assume that that same analysis will also apply to, you know, just the average student who might not be, but they're not in some identified subgroup.
Sure.
So the analysis that we conduct for a variety of tests, I'll use MCAS, we'll go through individual item analysis and look at the standards and where students score, and then look at mean scores for the group, and then see who got those wrong. And we can drill down with that analytics software to find out where students might be confused. And we found, and I always use this example, a number of years ago, when doing our analysis, we found that we were really, that Core Plus in our mathematics program had, I don't want to say weak, but certainly didn't have a strong geometry-centric or focus. And as a result, our geometry scores within those math MCAS tests suffered, with scores of students, numerous students not answering correctly questions around geometry. So Mrs. Johnson, Mrs. Monopoly, and I met to discuss some things that we could do to shore up the curriculum around instructional practice to improve geometry scores within the mathematics test within the curriculum. As a result of that, the scores next year went up and continue to go up in those strands that we, but we do that consistently, whether it's in English, whether it's in science, or whether it's mathematics, to try and improve areas. And some of the questions, I wouldn't say are trick, but certainly SAT, College Board, AP, the questions are pretty specific, and as teachers and directors look at that information can better inform their own instruction in how they prepare students for those questions. So all subgroups are looked at. I think some of the subgroups that we really do need to focus on are those that are high needs and how do we bring, you know, raise all boats. But certainly, we'll look at everyone, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Further questions, comments? Dr. McGee?
A comment and a question. The comment is that it would be nice to see if we could look for ways to use the Youth Risk Behavior Survey a little bit to get into the social-emotional learning, to the various subgroups that may be a crisis. We have, I think, a real opportunity in this district because we do oversample, we do have enough data within this district to look at the district itself. Many other districts don't have that. They just have the statewide sample, and so therefore, if they try to introduce a change, they won't be able to measure as to whether their district improved or not. We can do that. The question is whether there you see or learn of any opportunities opening up to move some students off-campus to further their high school education. Are there any opportunities that you're aware of?
Right now, no. I think what we have to do is continue to build out our internship program through ACE Internship, and we talked about retooling that a couple of years ago. The feedback, it's interesting, the feedback that we receive from students is usually a 50-50 split or 70-30 split, where students really like the last six weeks or eight weeks of that last quarter of their senior year off. I say off, out of school, in the workplace, working every day. They feel that's a valuable experience. There are other opportunities, if we were to retool that, to actually have a more, I want to say focused, but more consistent, shorter consistent time. For instance, sending students out for two hours a day to an internship and having employers work with students, say, 10 hours a week, two hours a day versus six hours a day for eight weeks. I mean, to ask an employer to do that, that's a lot of work for an employer to take an intern on. I think it might be more manageable. We might be able to get more traction if we do smaller increments of that. So that's certainly something that we can take a look at. I've been in contact with a couple of foundations around grants, around building out career innovation pathways. We, Dr. Soria and I met with Lieutenant Governor and the Executive Office of Education regarding some of these pathways built out, particularly one of the real, one of the real areas that is in need of Massachusetts is the tech sector. They're projecting 500,000 jobs in the next five to 10 years that will be available. There's a heavy push for computer science and programming in particular, programming, if you're good at it and you can teach yourself, and I don't, you know, you don't necessarily need a college degree to land an entry-level programming position at a corporation. So as I recently, I think it was last week, I had a conversation with the 1-8 Foundation and another group on a conference call to see how we could build out that pathway to potentially either channel students to a college/university through that pathway, or have college/university come to us. There's a capital skills grant that's out there because the state also understands that there's problems within vocational technical education, that is, there's certainly access issues there for students in shoes where that go to the comprehensive high school versus Voc Tech, and the demand for Voc Tech is so extraordinary that there's going to be, I think, an infusion of capital and money for innovative programs that are going to address career-specific needs in the next year, six months to a year and a half, which we would potentially be eligible for if we build some programming out. So we're working on that. There'll be some of the summer work and fall work that we do behind the scenes, but there's no specific plan to move more students out of the high school yet, but it certainly is, and we're certainly on our mind of ways that we can do that to alleviate some of the congestion we have within hallways and the cafeteria and all that. I'm not sure we'll ever get there in terms of addressing the capacity piece. So we're working on it, but it's not an easy solution.
Thanks. Colleagues, further questions, comments? Mrs. Konzano?
So I am highly impressed with this improvement plan and would only encourage you to apply some of the SEL learning to, you know, not biting off too much.
Sure.
Than you can chew. So that work-life balance, they're all amazing. Each one that you went through are just so meaningful and important. I have a question. It may be too specific at this time, and it was around homework, but it was a conversation I think we had recently about Alexa, that homework program, that math assessment, and whether or not you would be thinking of homework relying and using technology in that way. It might be too early, but...
Probably too early to say.
Right.
But Dr. Soria and I met with, the commissioner visited the school, you were there, and we talked in our meeting with the new education commissioner about the state looking at artificial intelligence to look at standardized, scoring standardized tests, which is an interesting concept in and of itself. But with the Alex piece, we certainly have to, it is a subset to the homework around Alex. If you ask students around Alex, they love it, right?
It's wonderful. Sunday night time goals are excellent.
So I think we do have to take a look at that, and we talked about this past week, earlier this week, with our leadership group, around how we're going to address and work with parents and families around addressing some of the things that they're seeing in Alex and how do we remediate or negotiate some of those things that makes it meaningful and not focused on, like this heavy-time-specific and percentage goals and what's that mean for, really, there's a lot to it. Oversimplifying it, but, so we have to figure that piece out as well. But that's a subset of the homework piece, yeah.
Sure, it's part of the conversation, yeah. I look forward to hearing, next year.
We love Alex at the high school.
If I could add one thing about Alex, most of the time, it's a week period. I have Ms. Blasziyov, wonderful person, excellent teacher, and we are assigned, my class is assigned up till Sunday night, you have a two-hour time goal. Now, in that time goal, you complete topics and you earn a percentage in the Alex pie chart, is what they call it. In my experience with Alex, I feel like it's a very, very beneficial practice tool, especially since I have my math final coming up. My teacher has put in an assignment that'll help us practice for that final. But sometimes I see it as almost something, if there's no homework, that Alex is assigned. And it can be very overwhelming at some points because if you don't reach that time goal, your percentage is going to go down. And if you don't complete a certain number of topics, that percentage will go down. And sometimes it is a grade. So I try to get it done as much as I can, show my work to make sure that I do have the proof that I did my Alex. But like I said, I think it's a good tool, but the time goal can be a little stressing depending on what's going on during the week.
And I think you said, Mrs. Fritz, it's that stress piece.
Yes.
And we got to figure that piece out because there's a stressor there for some people. And with theirs, we're hearing that from students, so we got to figure that out. I'm hearing it from parents as well, so we have to figure it out.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments?
I would just add that much like our elementary and middle school programming, I do find your goals to be ambitious but also appropriate and achievable, so great proposal so far as I'm concerned. Dr. Soria, do you have anything to add before we proceed to a vote?
I'd like to thank Nick.
I'd like to thank Nick for representing the student body here and commend the high school, school council for, for having students as co-chairs, not only members. I think the fact that the high school culture heavily relies on student voice in a variety of ways in order to help influence the practices there and the day-to-day operations and the climate, it will continue to be critically important going forward and there's opportunities for leadership, but also just for, to be informed and to hear how kids are feeling about different aspects. I'm excited about the work that's going to be happening over the next few years, both, you know, for our five-year overall plan, but these next two years as we start to grapple with really identifying what are some of the things we're going to look at and narrowing our focus a bit onto where we're going to get a lot of leverage. And I think you've identified some places that if we do, if we identify the right things and then spend concentrated time over the next five-year period, really doing good work at them, I think there will be a lot of leverage there to make things even better for what's already a strong school in a variety of ways. But again, I commend you for the plan and appreciate the work that the council put into it and thank Mr. Buzillo for his leadership and Nick, again, excellent job. So thanks for being here.
Thank you. Colleagues, we do need a vote. At this time, I would entertain a motion that the committee vote to approve the school improvement plan for Shrewsbury High School.
So moved.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Next item on our agenda, we have nothing under curriculum. Under policy, we do have a second reading and a vote with regard to our policy on the regulation of conduct of teachers. When approving the recent update to our harassment policy, committee members suggested reviewing the policy framework that addresses potential staff to student harassment. After consulting with legal counsel, an updated draft of our staff conduct policy was prepared, it is before us tonight for a second reading and a vote. Draft Policy 321 provides an update that meets the requirements of mass general law and articulates the expectations for all SPS staff, including but not limited to teachers. It was presented at the meeting on April 25th and posted for public review. We did have a minor language change that was highlighted in yellow included in our book from the first presentation as well as an additional change that was communicated to us electronically this afternoon. I do not believe we have received any further feedback on this policy. I know we as a committee have not. Dr. Sawyer, anything to you? And with that, Mrs. Konzano from the Policy Subcommittee or Ms. Malone, anything to add?
Nope.
Excellent. Members, is there any discussion?
I'm satisfied with the work that's been done and my concerns have been addressed.
Excellent. At this time then, I would entertain a motion that the committee vote to approve the updates to Policy 321 regulations for the conduct of staff.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is under Finance and Operations. Mr. Collins will provide us with a final update on the fiscal year 2018 budget. Mr. Collins?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pouch. So in your school committee packet, you have a report that shows the categorical areas of expense and as you know, this current fiscal year, fiscal year 18, our budget was just over $62.3 million. As of May 29th, we had expenditures of $49,766,498 and encumbrances of just over $11.2 I am at this point of the year and we still have a little ways to go, but I am projecting that certainly we'll be on budget and fully expend our town-approved appropriation. And you can see there's some various differences or variances in each of these categories. I figured I would just highlight a few of them. And first would be the area of substitutes. So these, the following areas, we're experiencing budget surpluses. So on the category of substitutes, a five, for example, we had budgeted just over $835,600 and projecting that we'll have a total expenditure in that category of $575,000 for a variance of $260,000 to the good, which is about 31%. So that's, that's a big percentage difference. And so what seems to be happening this year is that we have, of course, two categories of substitutes. We have the regular day-to-day substitutes and we also have long-term substitutes. And our expenditures for day-to-day substitutes are running very close to budget. It's in the area of long-term substitutes that we're running significantly under budget. So I think this is likely due to the rate change that was approved, having a fixed $200 a day expense per long-term substitute workday and also experiencing just overall less long-term substitutes. I had reported earlier in the middle of the year that our special education transportation budget was running under, under budget and projecting it would be 19% under budget primarily due to running fewer buses during last summer, July and August, which is still fiscal 18, summer special education program. And then also in the category of educational contract services, which is primarily outsourced contract services for special education that will be under budget as well. And those types of contract services could be and are like music therapy, vision therapy, some contract physical therapy. So we're running under budget there as well, as we are with our telephone expenditures. So that's all good news in terms of finances, but those are the ones that had the highest variances. You can see other salary categories on a percentage basis for administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, we're running on a percentage basis very close, close to budget. Some variances where we're, where we'll be over budget, the so-called employee benefits category, projecting in that category, that's a seven. That will be running $30,000 or about 10% over budget and that's primarily due to more retiree sick leave, sellback than budgeted. Another category where it will be running over budget would be administrative contract services, projecting 13.5% over budget. And this isn't intentional, we made some choices to replace the public address system at Spring Street School and also in the middle of the year, which was very beneficial, purchasing the Thought Exchange software to help us with soliciting input for grade configuration decision relative to the Veal project. So those are areas where we're over budget, but it was intentional. And then finally, I would say that all those categorical surpluses, if you will, and deficits basically allow us in the, in the special education tuitions category, C1, to sum all those up and effectively what we'd be doing is spending more of our appropriation than budgeted to the tune of $829,000, which allows us to carry forward that equal amount in circuit breaker money, which does not expire at the end of the fiscal year. We can carry forward to fiscal 19 and that was part of our plan. It was part of our budget reduction plan that we would leverage those funds into fiscal 19 as well. So all in all, it's coming together as planned and happy to report that we'll be, certainly with respect to, with respect to this pot of money, the general fund will fully expend it by the end of the year. Happy to answer any questions that the committee might have and also you can see on your report that this is one of those items that does require a school committee vote to authorize the transfers between categories to effectively zero out the funding by the end of fiscal year, June 30th.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Colleagues, questions, comments? I do have one question. I noticed that we are seeing increased homeless and foster child busing costs. The dollar amount doesn't look too severe and perhaps you don't have this information handy, but I'm wondering about how many students that represents or what sort of variance in terms of the number of students as opposed to the dollars from what we projected to actual? Are we talking one or two kids here or there or was it more of a significant difference?
I, I'd say it's more, you know, it's more like five or six students more than usual and that, we're experiencing the additional costs is in the foster care area and that's part of kind of an evolving federal legislation to provide also those students stability of their education and providing transportation services that we weren't necessarily providing a couple of years ago. So I'd say it's more of in the handful, five, six, seven students more than expected. The other thing that I would say is, you know, given the timing of the development of the fiscal 19 budget, that we're able to make some adjustments in these categories for our fiscal 19 budget to try to regulate it in a way where we're seeing variances and more appropriately budget for fiscal 19, but also, you know, we're going to have, I'll have to take a look at, you know, how we land the year this year and also incorporate and have that, our final expenditures for this year also inform development of fiscal 20 budget. So we're going to take a look at the substitute things and see if it persists for the upcoming school year. And, you know, that might be an opportunity to lower our budget fiscal 20 if it sticks. So, you know, we want to make sure we're kind of reading the information and helping it inform our budget preparation for succeeding years as well.
Those can be big swings, obviously, in terms of, you know, year over year, whether someone has a long-term illness or whether, how many maternity leaves we might be experiencing. So obviously we'll look at trends, but if those things persist, we'll be able to make some adjustments going forward. The other piece about foster children, that really for those watching, it can go both ways. It's, you know, if a student were, for example, removed from a home in another community by the Department of Children and Families and they were fostered here in Shrewsbury, we share the cost of sending that student back to their home district so they may maintain their stability in their original school district. And the opposite can also take place as well. But Kim Patrick in Mr. Collins' office does an excellent job helping to arrange those kinds of transportation situations in a way that not only is efficient, but is, is working with care and respectfully with the, with the families involved in sometimes very difficult situations and making sure those students have the stability that they need.
And I think I just took a quick look here. It looks like the total dollar amount is, is about $21,000 for that grouping of students as well.
Thank you. Dr. Sawyer, anything else to add before we proceed to a vote?
I appreciate Mr. Collins' work and his team's work. Very confident that we're monitoring how things are moving through all along the way and pleased, obviously, that we're going to be in a, a good financial position to end the year so that we are able to move the dollars we anticipated forward through circuit breaker into fiscal year 19 and take care of the business we need to take care of this year. So again, appreciate their work and appreciate the support of the committee.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion that the committee votes to authorize the administration to make budget transfers from the original budget plan as necessary to eliminate deficits and surpluses with the intent of fully expending the total FY '18 appropriation by June 30th, 2018 and balancing all accounts.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda, also under Finance and Operations, is a fiscal year 2019 non-represented staff compensation adjustment. Rate changes are being requested for non-classified staff. We have a memo from Ms. Malone detailing the rate changes as enclosed, which was, of course, initially presented to us in executive session. We also have rate tables. I'll turn it over to Ms. Malone for a quick summary and take questions.
Sure. So there are three parts to this. The first is that we're requesting a 2% cost of living adjustment for our non-represented roles. That's things like technology, clerical, salaried administration support, not administrators, but a salaried administrative assistant, that's that sort of role, and the athletic trainer. In addition, we're looking for an increase of 1% for extended day child provider and lead child provider roles. It's necessary to mitigate the program costs in the upcoming school year and, and the rates are already well positioned in the market. And then the third piece of this is introducing a new scale, which it would be for the tier two level of the IT support and we are recommending that as well. And then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sawyer to discuss the last piece of the memo that you have in your, in your packet.
Sure. The other piece that is there is a recommended for what I would say is a long overdue adjustment to the stipend for the coordinators of development and volunteer services. That stipend was created in 2006 at $15,000 for a 15-hour-a-week part-time position during the school year. There are two individuals in those rules. When that rule evolved a few years back to include the development work in terms of fundraising, in terms of working on what turned out to be projects like the Colonial Fund and the Turf Field Project, wasn't quite certain that level of sophistication that would be required, but it's, it's been substantial and as indicated in the memo, believe that not only is the stipend lagging just to the fact that it's never been adjusted for any kind of cost of living or inflation, but that the position itself also was, should have a higher level of compensation. So my recommendation is to add on top of the current $15,000 stipend, $2,500 for the current fiscal year and then adjust that to an additional $5,000 for next year so that the stipend current year would move to $17,500 and then next year to $20,000 for each position. And then do want to, again, recognize the fact that $15,000 of that has actually contributed half, $7,500 by Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union and $7,500 by the Audubon Shrewsbury Apartments. Those are two corporate donors so that we appreciate their support for these important roles, which in turn get to help us develop a lot more fundraising for the district. And so I'm asking for your support for those adjustments as well.
Excellent. Colleagues, questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, at this time I would entertain a vote, excuse me, a motion that the committee votes to approve the compensation adjustments to non-represented staff for fiscal year 2019 as presented in the materials provided.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda, also under Finance and Operations, is with regard to the use of polystyrene in the food services program. Citizen petitioners had recently requested that an article be placed on the annual town meeting warrant, which would prohibit the dispensing of prepared food in disposable food service containers made from expanded polystyrene. Mr. Collins and Ms. Beth Nichols, who's our Director of Food Services, gave a presentation to the committee a few weeks back addressing the potential impact of the passage that that warrant article might have had on SPS. The petitioners were also invited to make a presentation to the school committee and we further held a public hearing on the topic. The committee at the time did not feel taking the position on the warrant article was appropriate. The warrant article was not approved at the annual town meeting. We did have a member request from Mrs. Fritz that the committee discuss the issue and provide some guidance to the administration regarding steps we might like to take going forward. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Fritz to kick off the discussion and talk about what we might like to do here.
I think when the students came and presented to us prior to town meeting, we did talk about if the ban was not approved at town meeting, that we would want to take a look at more, not just styrofoam, but this whole sustainable issue, looking at ways of doing things maybe differently. So now that the ban didn't pass, I think as a committee, we should take a look at the styrofoam issue. And I'm not quite sure exactly the best way to do that. Maybe that's more in a workshop and when we talk about sustainability, we can kind of put that more into a policy subcommittee as a broader overview.
Colleagues, further comments?
So I like the idea of doing this. I, I think that although I was not in favor of that particular item passing at the town meeting, it was because I was not convinced that it had been thoroughly investigated, that we had looked at all of the options, the consequences. the consequences of the options, any potential unintended consequences. I thought that it needed a lot more investigation and for us to, to sound out the costs and benefits of every alternative. And I think this would make a nice summer project for the school committee. I think we ought to do that and basically move towards the most sustainable alternative that serves the school district and the community.
Excellent. Mr. Wensky?
I agree. I think it's a worthwhile exercise. I think we've seen some other kind of chain restaurants take the steps to gradually reduce their styrofoam footprint, if you will. So I think it's worthwhile to look at it as a committee to see how we can act.
And I think it should be measured approach. We can't just jump in and say, this is bad or this is good, because we don't know. We have to look at what is out there, what, what resources are we going to have? Is it going to be a cost? You know, how do we pass that on to consumers? Do we not pass it on? So I think there's a lot to look at as opposed to just like, let's do this, and this is the best course of action. It's better to explore it first.
Mrs. Gonzano?
I like the idea of, if it goes to a policy subcommittee, of keeping it broad and, and having it be overarching in terms of sustainability instead of a, a single topic issue. So I, I support that idea and, and perhaps the workshop for, for kind of guidance around what we're gonna do.
What I visualize, can I go ahead? What I visualize here is that we get into meticulous detail regarding this particular problem. And as a result of that, we develop a framework for investigation that can be generalized to, to other problems. So we sort of start with a specific problem, and then from that experience, find out what framework serves us best in addressing problems going forward.
I see two sort of related themes of this discussion. And let me first say, as someone who was in favor of, I was in favor of the warrant article, and I do favor this committee taking action, I see the issue of polystyrene and what our approach to that is, but also the question of whether or not we as a committee might want to explore the development of a policy with regard to sustainability. As Mr. Collins noted eloquently during his presentation to us, you know, we are not environmental experts. Shrewsbury Public Schools doesn't staff environmental experts to handle purchasing or things of that nature. But I do know that we as a committee value sustainability. That's a value we want to teach our students. So I do think it is worth exploring in a broader sense. What are our values with regard to this topic? And in the future, how might we, or how might the district approach questions such as this? You know, this particular issue certainly generated a lot of attention by being at town meeting, but it certainly wasn't the first time somebody approached the school committee of the department with a concern or question about sustainability. And it certainly won't be the last. And so I think in addition to the question of polystyrene, it's worth this committee potentially exploring how we as a district and as a committee address these topics. So I personally would favor an approach that maybe we take a workshop that we can delve specifically at the issue of polystyrene, but as a policy subcommittee, which is of course, Mrs. Gonzano and myself, we consider some language, or we consider what might or might not be appropriate for the committee to look at from a broader policy perspective. Dr. Sawyer or Mr. Collins, I don't know if you have anything you wanted to add to the discussion at this point?
No, I think it's, it's helpful to, I think it's always wise not to try to develop policy around one's narrow issue, but I think a policy that looks more broadly at that whole idea could serve the district well. And I'm interested in how that could evolve in terms of, you know, addressing the specific issue that was raised, because we, I'm sure it'll come back again in some form. So I think doing some additional work to determine where we might go with it. In light of the, the work that was done this spring, I know Mr. Collins is continuing to work with Ms. Nichols and Food Services relative to, just continuing to gather information to be able to inform kind of how we might be able to go forward in the future. Maybe Mr. Collins can speak to a couple of those items as well.
Sure. And I, I think this is, you know, a topic that from food service to, you know, our own teachers and paraprofessionals, administrators, we're very interested in generally. The, you know, some specific things that, you know, has, that have kind of emerged out of this more recent discussion. For example, you know, in talking with Mrs. Nichols, you know, this whole idea, and these are, these are very specific to this topic and very specific unto themselves. But, and I know you're talking about a broader way to approach these things. But just as an example, you know, she thinks that, you know, the use of polystyrene straws is really no longer necessary, you know, in, in our school department. You know, we're using plastic milk containers, and students, you know, most students typically just drink out of the container, and a straw is not necessary. So this, you know, the elimination of a product like that that has polystyrene in it, you know, she thinks that, you know, next year, we can just use up our stock and eliminate that. She has looked at and, you know, kind of piloted, if you will, or tested out some non-styrene utensils. And, you know, the con of that has been typically that they've been in the past of very poor quality. Those are the kind that, you know, you put into like a piece of chicken or something like that, and they kind of just bend or break, and they don't function, you know. But now, of course, the marketplace, the industry is responding and providing more sturdy and usable products. So she thinks we can probably substitute at no additional cost for utensils, eliminating styrene utensils with non-styrene utensils. And, you know, I, I did mention that we would, you know, we do need and would get some outside help sheet, and this is just coincidental to tonight's meeting, but tomorrow is the day that she's walking around with a dishwasher vendor to survey our schools, to have them, you know, give us some of their assessment and valuation about the feasibility in the costs relative to installing dishwashers. So we'll gather all that information as well. And that will require, you know, again, I think some other probably additional assistance around, you know, measurement of water, impact of use of chemicals, cost of chemicals, and kind of have a total approach to this, not just, you know, looking at some cost factors and not others. So, you know, those are the things that kind of emerged as, as a result of this most recent conversation. And, you know, I, I do think it is, again, a topic that we're all very interested in. I also, and this is my own personal belief, and I know Mr. Wensky just mentioned, you know, some of the national providers. I mean, we came back from, Dr. Sawyer and I came back with Mr. Mizikar from MSBA a week ago, whenever we stopped at Chipotle, and we had the compostable bowl, right? And, you know, environmentally friendly bowl. And so, you know, part of our meal price included that bowl. You know, there's no third-party funding here. We, we as consumers all pay for the, the sustainable, you know, the ways to sustain our environment in the future. There's a cost to many of these things, and customers pay for, we all pay for these things. And so, you know, the commentary, commentary around, you know, if, if we were forced to use a substitute tray and there's an additional cost was not meant to be, you know, threatening or punitive or whatever. That's just the way business works. You know, we're enterprise fund, and if that's what the committee decides, then that's not a problem at all. We'll do that, and it just happens to come at some additional cost. So anyway, those are the things that she has undertaken and we'll, we'll continue to look at and evaluate with respect to the food service operation.
Thank you for those remarks, and thank you to you and Ms. Nichols and your team for your continued vigilance. I know, obviously, it's the list of things that you're required to purchase for the operations of our schools is not small, and we appreciate the time that you've put into this particular topic. Colleagues, is there consensus on the approach we've been discussing with regard to the potential use of a workshop to address the question of polystyrene and having the, the policy subcommittee examine sustainability in a broader sense?
Yes, sounds fine. Would we want members outside of the school committee to participate in this workshop?
That could certainly be a possibility. I think we probably would determine the specifics around the workshop after getting it scheduled, but I think that that certainly would be a possibility. And I would say I would further, while I work with the superintendent to get that scheduled, I would encourage members outside of that setting to do your own research and first and foremost decide what questions you feel you need addressed for your own benefit, and, and do your own research so we can have as reflective and involved a discussion as possible. And certainly, there's nothing to preclude further discussion beyond a single workshop, if that should become necessary. So if there's consensus that that's how the committee would like to proceed, I think that that's how we'll go. Anything further on this topic tonight?
Do you need a motion around?
I don't think we need a vote to refer to, if somebody would like to make a motion, you're welcome to do so, but I don't think, I don't think a vote is required for either of those courses of action. So without anything further on that topic, we have nothing under old business, nothing under new business, under approval of minutes. We do have minutes to approve from our regular school committee meeting of June 6th, which were provided under separate cover. Mrs. Fritz has reviewed those. Any additions, deletions, corrections, or discussion? Seeing none, without objection, those minutes from June 6th are accepted. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of reviewing and approving executive session minutes, and for the purpose of negotiations with the Shrewsbury Paraprofessionals Association. I'd entertain a motion at this time that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of reviewing and approving executive session minutes, and for the purpose of negotiations with the Shrewsbury Paraprofessionals Association, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and reconvene to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. This motion requiring a roll call vote to pass. Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzano?
Aye.
Mr. Palance?
Aye.
Thank you.